It is now seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the Johnston City Council meeting number 24-6 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask that you wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think I'll invite our special guests, state champions, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Could you do that for us?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There is no changes this evening.
Council, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
With approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the Public Communications. And we have two scheduled public communications this evening. The first is recognition of Johnston's first two-time state champion in wrestling and his teammates who placed seventh place. So I would invite you gentlemen to come back up here along with your coach.
Coaches.
Coaches. Which is Jacob? Jacob, Kayden, and Kobe. Thank you for standing in that order. That makes it easy for me. And the coaches that we have here this evening?
Aaron Teklenburg.
Joe Gibbons.
Jeff Helgason.
Well, thanks again to all of you for being here this evening. I'm just going to share with the audience here why you are here with us this evening. As I indicated when they were giving the Pledge of Allegiance, these guys are our state champions. Jacob here made history. How does it feel like, how does it feel to make history? I mean, that's pretty darn cool, right? He became the first wrestler ever to win two state championships. This year, you won it in the Class 3A championship for the weight class of 165. Last year, you were a little lighter at 152. That's amazing. That's two years in a row. And you're just a junior. What's going to happen next year? Three-time winner. That would be amazing. And along with you are your teammates, Kayden Leonard. And he finished seventh place in his class, which was Class 3A, 150 pounds. And Kobe Gibbons, seventh place in his class, Class A, 190 pounds. Let's just give these guys a clap. Incredible. And congratulations to your coaches as well. I mean, they obviously wouldn't be where they're at if you hadn't coached them so well. You know, I grew up in a small town in northwest Iowa. And we didn't not only have girls wrestling, but we didn't have boys wrestling either. So I know very little about the sport of wrestling, even though we've got these great wrestlers here in Johnston. Now, I did know, and I've met and talked several times with Dan Gable. Do you guys know who Dan Gable is? He's kind of a legend, right? Yeah. He's quite an amazing person. And I'm glad to hear that you know who he is because, you know, he really brought fame to wrestling here in Iowa. The fact that he won an Olympic gold medal in that sport. So because I don't know much about wrestling, I Googled today and I said, you know, why is it a good thing for kids to get into wrestling? And so what I pulled up is this top 10 reasons why kids should get into wrestling. Now, I'm not going to read all of them to you. And this came from the National Wrestling Association. But I'll just share a couple of points that they make here. The first is that wrestling develops athleticism. If you can say that word, you're almost 95% there. But what that means is in your sport, you learn balance, strength, coordination, and just overall body awareness, the fundamentals of being an athlete. Wrestling promotes personal responsibility. It is a sport where, you know, it's an individual sport and that you're the only person responsible for your success and failure. And it's you. Couple of other things that it says here is wrestling develops leadership skills. Even though it's an individual sport, you're also teammates. And you push each other, you teach each other, and you support each other in your wrestling. And then the other one that I want to point out here, and this is the one that I learned from Dan Gable. He told me that one of the most important things that you learn in wrestling is discipline. It teaches you discipline and accountability. And I'm going to read what it says here because I think this statement is so, is just well-stated. "There is literally no way to achieve ultimate success in the sport without choosing to do hard things even when you don't want to. And athletes must hold themselves accountable for their own actions if they want to succeed." I mean, I think that's an incredible statement. And it's an incredible, you know, statement of what you've had to do in order to get to the place that you are in your sport. So now I'm going to turn it back to you and say, you know, what have you learned from wrestling? Why did you get into wrestling? And what have you learned from it?
I got into wrestling through my brothers and my dad. So I started at a pretty young age. And what I've learned from it is just how to persevere through hard things. It's a really hard sport. And a lot of tough things come your way in the sport, like losses and stuff. And you gotta just, it's only yourself out there. So you have to learn to take responsibility for that loss and learn to work harder and so that doesn't happen again.
I got introduced to wrestling in my seventh grade year by my friend. And then wrestling's taught me a lot. Taught me how to control my emotions and made me a hard worker. And I think overall, it's just a really good thing to get into.
I'm Kobe Gibbons, and I got into wrestling from a young age. Kind of runs in my family. A lot of my family members do it. And I've learned kind of similar, just you gotta keep working. Can't get down on yourself. You always have to believe. And that's what I tried to do.
Tell me, just share with all of us what it is that you want to do once you graduate from high school. What are your career goals?
Wrestle for the Hawkeyes.
Or Iowa State.
I'm not quite sure what exactly I want to do after high school. I do know that I want to wrestle in college, just I don't know where yet. And as far as school, like what I want to study and stuff, I don't really have a clue yet.
I'm not certain on what I want to study yet either, but I could definitely see myself wrestling in college.
I know that I want to wrestle in college as well. Don't know where and I don't know what I'm going to be studying.
How about the Olympics? Are any of you going to follow in the footsteps of Dan Gable and maybe aspire to go to the Olympics?
That'd definitely be something that'd be pretty cool. But we'll see when the time comes, I guess. I want to keep pursuing that or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big task, but I could see. It's a hard thing to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, I wish they had like a NFL for wrestling. That'd be pretty cool. I can't create that. But yeah, I mean, that's the closest thing they got, and that'd be pretty cool.
That's great. And you know, you've all accomplished so much already. But you're very young, and you've got a lifetime ahead of you. And you've learned some really good skills, some really good life skills. So I'm sure no matter what you do going forward, you're going to be very successful in what it is that you accomplish. Coaches, did you want to add anything?
Just congrats to these guys. Wrestling is a hard sport. And you know, I'm a dad too, and we've all been athletes up here. And we've done lots of different things. And seeing your kids compete in different things, wrestlers I have a lot of respect for because they do things that a lot of people won't. And I always tell them that, tell the kids. One of those things that's hard to get kids out to do sometimes because of the work that's involved. So stick with it, and they'll be just fine. Oh. Well, I went to Marshalltown High School. I was a football player, a baseball player, wrestler. I ended up playing football at University of Iowa and then Northern Iowa both. I almost wrestled at Iowa State. And I wasn't as good as this guy. So, no, but, so yeah, I pursued playing football in college and then studied education, gotten teaching. And been teaching 23 years and coaching that long too. So in three different states, but back here now for the last 16 years.
Well, I'm the old guy up here. I wrestled at Iowa State. No, it's the greatest sport, and I respect anybody that participates in it. And these three guys have really stepped up, been great leaders, had a great season. What the great thing about is we're going to get another year to coach them. So next year, hopefully, they can duplicate what Jacob's done down there and get higher on the stand than what these two guys did. So I'm really proud of them. And like you said earlier, this is going to prepare them for what lies ahead. And that's the biggest thing that you get out of the sport is what you can collect as you train and learn a lot about yourself. So we're excited for their future.
I'm Jeff Helgason. I went to Lake Mills High School in Northern Iowa. I was a four-sport athlete there and then went to the University of Northern Iowa to play football. And I've been coaching football for 27 years, I think. And I've coached wrestling for past seven years, maybe. And it's a great sport. It's a 24-hour sport because of the weight cutting. So that's unique. Other sports. I don't know of any other sports in high school that are 24-hour sports like the sport of wrestling is. So people don't always realize that part of it. And I think maybe I'll just close by thanking you and the council for having us. It is really cool to be recognized by your town.
And that is by our entire town. You know, we are all so proud of you, not just the council, not just me, not just the people in the room here, but the entire community is so proud of what you've accomplished. So congratulations to you. I have some certificates here, and I want to present them to you. And then we're going to have to, we absolutely need to take some pictures, if that's okay. The first one to you, Jacob, for, put my glasses on. For your tremendous achievement at the 2024 IHSAA State Wrestling Championship for making history as the first wrestler to win two state championships. Congratulations. And this one's for you, Kayden, for the performance, for your performance in placing at the 2024 IHSAA State Wrestling Championship. Kobe, this one's for your performance in placing at the 2024 IHSAA State Wrestling Championship. Okay, we have one other scheduled presentation under Public Communications, and that is an update from the Des Moines International Airport.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to give you an update on the progress at the city, or at the airport. I will say upfront that where we are wouldn't have been possible if it wasn't for the community sport and all of the community sport that we've received thus far. It's an accomplishment that the entire metro and most of central Iowa got behind. So as we approach 100% design, which is due in April, and we're pretty much there, one of the requirements of architects was to give us a fly-through, so a look at what the terminal will look like or is supposed to look like at least when we get construction done. One of the things that aren't incorporated into the fly-through that I'll put on here in just a second is the artwork. We are still working with the Greater Des Moines Public Art Foundation to have a competition with artists. Most of them from Iowa. Some of them, it was an international RFP or Request for Proposal that went out and have it narrowed down so far to eight artists. And that process is ongoing. So that's not in this fly-through. And hopefully, we'll be able to add that when we get there. So I'll just play this, and then certainly we'll take any questions that anybody has. The sound's not there. Maybe I'll narrate and point out a couple of things. As you see, the elevator bank there, that's one area where art would possibly go on the site of the elevator. As we approach in here into the meet and greet area, there's another area for art. That white wall that you see in the center there is another area that's been depicted for art. Still working on the branding for the coffee shop as well. Coming up, this area again is for art. Depicted for art has been reinforced for art. One of the things that's unique about the design is when it comes time to board, you saw the green sign there that was lit up. It will turn green and notify people on the concourse. This gate is boarding. And this white wall off to the left of the screen, there is another area that's been depicted as art, but we're not sure what kind. We don't want people stopping there, so. And that's the skywalk from the new garage that's under construction right now. So as we move forward, you saw they're coming in 2026. I will tell you, I'm not going to give you a date, but I will tell you it will be late, very late in 2026 or possibly early in 2027, very early in '27, depending on if we stay on schedule with construction or not. This spring, starting here in April, you will see work begin again on the site. We'll start with the foundations, and by summer, we should see steel coming up out of the ground. We are constructing this under the C Mar or Construction Management at Risk process. I think we're one of the first governmental entities that is using that process. I would tell you that thus far in development, I can't imagine doing it any other way. It has been a very good process, but of course, we're not done yet. And that attitude could change. But right now, I can't imagine doing this any other way. We are on budget or slightly below budget. We do have the fifth bid package that will be coming out in April and be accepted in May. And then there's two more bid packages after that. But so far, the estimators have been very, very accurate, and we are on budget or slightly below budget. With that, I would answer any questions that anybody would have.
So Tom, I know that just in attending some of your presentations out at the airport, you're planning to construct this in phases now. What will be constructed by the end of 2026?
By the end of '26, the first phase is the areas that we're having the most congestion. That's the ticket counters. In the industry, it's called the headhouse. And so it's the processing of the passengers. So it's the ticket counters. It's both bag systems inbound and outbound. And so the outbound being the screening systems and then passenger screening. Once you get through passenger screening, of course, we will have restrooms, a new restaurant, coffee shop, and six gates in that first phase. Then there'll be a short bridge to the existing gates, the existing concourses. So in total, we will have 18 boarding bridges and 18 gates, which is 50% more than what we have now. But I'll also tell you that under design and due in June is part of the second phase, which is five more gates. The entire second phase is five more gates, but we're looking at potentially enough funding to build three more. So that would be nine jet bridges and nine gates on the new area. Not positive that that will happen. I am very positive that Phase 1A will be built and that we are funded for the very first phase. But again, we're under design because anticipate that there may still be some funding for that second phase.
And Kevin, I apologize for calling you Tom. I've dealt with Tom Foley up at the Capitol for years and years. Tom is the name that came to mind, and thank you, Tom. Tom, what's pointing that out to me?
I've been called worse.
Other questions for Kevin?
Thank you for this. Visually makes it very, we know that'll happen. Otherwise, it was just the last time you came by, you presented, and I was not sure how this goes. The visual presentation makes us really see that it's happening. Appreciate it. I had a question I wanted to ask, but you already answered that question. How many more terminals will be happening with this new construction? You said nine.
Well, so originally, again, I'm going to tell you in the first phase, it's six. I anticipate we'll get three of the second phase. When we are totally done with all three phases, it'll be 22 new gates.
22 plus 12, that'll be.
Well, the 12 will go away. The 12 will then get torn down. So it'll just be 22 gates with room for expansion as growth continues to occur. There's room for expansion beyond 22. But initially, that's the plan is for 22.
Okay. I know. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We are, you know, on the financing, I will tell you, we are finalizing the loan agreement with Polk County. Polk County, the referendum passed by 80%, which, again, when I talk about community and the sport that we've received, that's almost overwhelming. But we will, the county will go to the bond market here in May, and we will have the loan agreement finalized in April. We'll take it to the airport board in April so that that's complete. Again, we can borrow up to $350,000, $350 million. I wish it was $350,000. $350 million from the county. Anticipate doing that in three different tranches. And hopefully, we'll not hit the $350,000. Can't count on right now on that being around $300 million that we will need, so.
Are you done?
I am. I'm good.
So I guess, are you kind of figuring out, do you feel like you have identified all the necessary funding sources you need to accomplish all the various phases? Or is there still a gap remaining?
So we have identified the funding sources we need for Phase 1A for the very first phase, for that six gates, the headhouse that I was talking about. We are now working on the second phase and seeing if there's additional funding, whether it be from the federal side or from the state that we could capture to go ahead and build those other three gates. That second phase is considerably less expensive because we don't have to add additional restrooms. It's just the hold rooms where we sit and wait to board and the jet bridges. So it's quite a bit cheaper than this first phase.
Okay. So you are still needing to secure additional, whether it be federal or state funding?
For the second phase, yes.
Okay. And I think this past week at the airport probably has to be one of the more crazier weeks at the airport. I can't tell you how many people stopped me. My wife, being one of them, saying, oh, my God, I didn't plan early enough to be at the airport, kind of not expecting the parking to be as challenging because of spring break. So, and she wasn't the only one. So I don't know if that's your busiest week of the year, but you probably have others that get pretty close. But it certainly has to be one of them, so.
Spring break is our heaviest parking demand. At the last board meeting, well, last year, while last year, unbudgeted, we asked the board to allow us to expand the surface lot. We put 750 spaces in. And I do remember saying that should get us through the next couple of years until the garage is done. It didn't. We still got into, into our backup parking. It was very, very tight. We were nervous and.
Well, I just want to say that being from Johnson and purple being a predominant color here in our city, my wife had the opportunity to use the purple lot this week.
And that's our backup.
So I didn't realize there was a purple.
I didn't know either, but I found a spot in the red.
Unless there's other questions?
Any other questions for Kevin?
I, I was just going to give you a hard time. First of all, I would say thank you before I give you the hard time though, and that is the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee had a chance to visit with one of your colleagues, Brian Mulcahy, earlier this year. And I really appreciate on that snowy, snowy day to, to be able to provide his expertise via Zoom, to be able to kind of hear, I'd say not only to lay out kind of where the financing was at that point in time, but to clarify some things for the city, which we needed to hear. And, and we appreciate you coming to, to kind of continue that, that presence as we want to be a partner toward the airport and, and all that it brings to the city. I was going to give you a hard time though, your flyover has, or fly through has too many people wearing shoes at certain parts. So if you really want to make it accurate, I think we need to have some renderings with some models of folks putting on their shoes again and, and really their, their belts and saggy pants. So work on that a little bit if you would.
So I will fix that for you. Get pre-clearance.
Exactly.
You don't have to take them off.
Well, and, and just to add to what Brian, what Councilmember Burkhart has said, not, not only was the information we got from Brian helpful, but also I, again, Mike and I were out at the last meeting that you had and, and I, I found that information incredibly helpful too. And I, I personally was very pleased to see the progress that you have made. You've, you've, you've done a lot in just the last few months and it's, I, I found it very encouraging.
Well, thank you. And I, and, and one of the things that I'm here for tonight is to thank all of you for your support, both political support, the moral support and the financial support that you presented or have provided us. And so I do have a plaque for you.
Well, that means all the council members have to come down and have their picture. Whoops, we have, somebody can take a picture. Keith is really good.
Everybody ready? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, this is beautiful.
For those champions of, of the project.
Well, thanks again for being here, Tom, Kevin. Okay, we are still on our public communications. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is to consider approval of the first reading of ordinance number 1114, an official zoning map amendment for .67 acres from CD to C3. The subject property is located along the southern end of Pitch Parkway and adjoining Centurion Park, PZ case 24-0, 24-03. Open this public hearing at 7:35. Clayton?
Good evening. Andrew C. Christensen Living Trust has submitted a rezoning petition to rezone 0.67 acres from its present CD Conservation District to C3 Regional Commercial. The intent of the rezoning is to bring the entirety of the property, which is this darker line here, into the same zoning district, which is the C3, with the intent to support development of a new hotel adjoining the Centurion Public Park and the Ignite Sports Business Facility just to the north here. It's along the southern end of Pitch Parkway, which is the new Loop Road that goes behind Polly Eyes Pizza. The property is shown on the Thrive 2040 Comprehensive Plan as a combination of commercial and parks and open space. I think we could probably get a little better guidance by looking at our Merle Hay Road Gateway Master Plan, which really is looking to establish a destination for people to come, visit, recreate and stay. And by approving this rezoning, it's supporting a development of a hotel. I believe the intent is 126 rooms to allow for people to stay in this area and enjoy the amenities that we are bringing to our community. They did provide a conceptual site layout. I will just give a big, bold caveat that this is conceptual. We're not approving the site design tonight, but this is intended to really help illustrate how the site is intended to develop. There is a site plan submitted and under staff review that is largely consistent with this site development. The intent would be that this would come forward and be prepared for council approval on the same night as your third reading, so two more, not, not next one, but the one after. Adjacent land uses, north would be the Ignite Site. To the east is additional commercial development. To the south, you got the car dealership, Lithia VW. And then immediately to the west would be the Centurion Park, which you see the line work here on this concept drawing of how this would interconnect with a shared connection for both pedestrians and vehicular as kind of a relief valve of sorts when we get heavy traffic volumes and usage down there in the park. I did provide notice to all property owners within range and no public comments have been received to date. And seeing anyone necessarily in the audience, but there are a few people, maybe they, I believe, are representatives, might have something I wish to add at this question there as well. Planning and Zilling Commission has recommended approval.
Council, have any questions for Clayton?
Sorry, I don't have a question. That, that road that you see next to that hotel, is that Johnson Drive or Pitch Parkway?
This is Pitch Parkway here.
That says Johnson Drive, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a textual error that will get cleaned up.
Just making sure that's the right one.
Yeah, it was just a textual error.
That's something that Snyder submitted to the city, right? This document?
Yeah, this was prepared by Snyder and Associates on behalf of their client.
Other questions for Clayton?
There won't, I'm assuming you guys know where the floodway is in this portion of the hotel that is in what was conservation area. There's no conflict.
It does not encroach in any, any designated floodway. There are areas down here that are in the designated floodplain, which is traditionally the 100-year floodplain. In combination with Ignite and Centurion Park, there's some work to do, some grade changes through there, which are supported by FEMA. But no, we are not encroaching into the floodway itself.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Clayton, did you say someone did want to speak?
I just said we had a representative of the applicant.
Okay, okay, okay. Does anyone else want to speak? Are there any other questions? If not, we will close the public hearing at 7:40. We have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1114. Still moved?
Second.
You have a motion and second discussion? Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, conduct a public hearing and consider approval, approval of resolution number 24-75, releasing and vacating two trail easements located upon property at 5055 Merle Hay Road. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:41.
With the development of the Bombers Golf and Family Entertainment Development on the east side of Merle Hay Road, just north of Beaver Creek, the existing trail is planned to be realigned easterly primarily along this kind of north and south alignment. There'll be some adjustments along the east, east-west leg, primarily as it's disrupted by the Des Moines Water Works project. With the final plot, which you saw at your previous meeting, there was a new easement granted. We just needed to formalize that this easement would be vacated and so that it wouldn't be in, in disturbing any of their proposed improvements on the site. As an aside from the trail easement, since the last meeting, I know Councilmember Martin, you had inquired about some additional plantings in the area. We have received a planting plan for the eastern portion of the site, so that is under staff review and likely will be coming before the, the council in the next two to four weeks, I presume. The items of additional tree work along the southern portions is intended, that would get kind of clumped in with the canoe kayak launch work, so we have a cohesive feel in that location. So I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that since that was a question that was brought up at the last meeting. But regarding the trail, vacation staff is recommending approval of vacating it, considering the new easement has been granted.
Any questions for Clayton?
Clayton, on the subject of the planting plan for this property, it was a great concern of the tree board when we started talking about the development of this property and there was a lot of promises by the developer about the money, tree replacement money and how we were going to do improved species, native species. Anyway, what I'd like to suggest would be, when appropriate, the tree board would like to look at the plans, I'm sure.
Yeah, we could certainly look at that and considering the timing of when it came in and when the next tree board meeting is, well, we'll consider, consider if it can fit onto this next tree board agenda or not, but we'll certainly take a look at it.
And it's not so much that they need to see the placement of the trees as much as they really are going to be interested in the tree species.
Okay. I think we can work with that. Thank you for that note.
Other questions or comments for Clayton? If not, is there, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience? Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing none? Actually, one. Well, we will close the public hearing then at 7:44. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 24-75?
Still moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion? Send a vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion? Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have one item under the non-consent agenda, item 7A, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,332,622.84. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do the administrator comments?
Mayor and council, just one item I'd bring you to your attention. I know late morning on April 11th through early afternoon, they'll be holding the final library director candidate presentations. Encourage you guys to attend. If there is going to be a quorum, if you just let me know who plans to attend, so if we have to post as a public meeting, we can do that. But you are all welcome to attend those presentations and then provide feedback to the Library Board of Trustees on, on the process and your views as they move forward on that hiring process. With that, I'd like to pass over to Matt, who has a couple of comments this evening.
I'll be brief with my comments. I just wanted to quickly touch on the Hunter Street project. Give a quick update, we did close 100 Street this morning. There we go. So just real quick, we did close 100 Street just south of 62nd to Windsor Parkway at 9:00 AM this morning. We did have the contractor in by 10:00 AM removing asphalt on the roadway, so we do have construction activity happening out there. They do intend, the contractor does intend to start actually installing storm sewer and infrastructure, really the box culvert next to the Adam Ridge Pond. They'll do that starting Monday of next week. They plan on to remove the rest of the roadway as well as locate the utilities that are in that area. There's, there's several in there. I've got the detour map up here. The detour was set up this morning and it really is 62nd to 86, over to 54th, back to 100th. So you can see in that red hashed out area in the center, top portion of the map is the actual Phase 1 of the construction. So it stops just short of Windsor Parkway and that's due to be completed by June 1st. With that, we still do have the access to Casey's and the daycare open just south of 66th on 100 Street for approximately the next month, month and a half to, to allow access into there. Then we'll have to close that when we put storm sewer across there and go to pave that road. That's really it for 100 Street, but just a couple of notes on a couple of other projects. Des Moines Water Works has started their tree clearing along Beaver Drive on the rest of that project. So if you get any questions from, from residents, that's what that project is, is their tree clearing. And then Mid-American also began trimming trees or removing trees today between underneath the high power lines that'll run from Foxborough up to 93rd Street. And that's just their regular maintenance purposes of that high power line. So in case you get any questions there. And then the last item I've got is severe weather week starts next week. Runs the 25th through the 29th and we'll have the statewide tornado drill next Wednesday, March 27th at 10 o'clock. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Matt. Anything else, Mike?
On this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Did you have also comments? Councilmember Evans?
Nothing, thanks.
Councilman, ready?
I'll pass, thanks.
And Coop?
I am normally not one that encourages anyone to come to the Capitol, but tomorrow morning at, from 7:30 to 9:00, our friends at Iowa PBS are having the, their legislative breakfast in the legislative dining room. And they are focusing on their upcoming episode of Antiques Roadshow, which is going to be video, produced at Living History Farm. So anyway, if you're so inclined and want to stop by the Capitol between 7:30 and 9:00, but don't, don't linger. Maybe you may see something you don't, you may regret.
Don't go upstairs.
Yeah, just come to the basement. A little, little helpful hint.
Breathe your eyes.
And if you see Lynn there, take her home.
Councilmember Burkhart?
I can't top that.
Sorry.
Councilwoman Martin?
I have nothing. Well, I'll just share, the T-shirts for Crites on the Green are in. Aren't those nice?
All pink.
You'll look good in pink, Councilman Evans.
This color would, this color would look great on you.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I do think it's, I.
It's a nice color.
It's, yeah, I, I'm going to wear one, just for you.
Real, real men wear pink. Anyway, just a reminder that that's, that is coming up the first weekend in May and it's going to be a beautiful day. And, and I'll tell you what, the staff has done and the volunteers that helped it have done an incredible job putting together a really nice program this year. So if you, if you can make it, I would certainly encourage you to, to attend for a portion or all of it because it's, it's going to be an amazing day. So share that with your friends and, and family because it'll, it'll, it's, it's worth, worth coming out to this year. Anything else to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, we are adjourned.